Aren't here that should be, but they're probably lost and they'll get here eventually. My name is Commissioner Cummings, if you're not aware. And this is my solicitor, John Sarah. This is our Chief Financial Officer, Tom Durkin. This is Tracy Hart, who works in our administrative office and is recording our meeting right now. And this is generally who we're working with throughout the day. So, just so you know, who's standing around me if he never came to one of our meetings. I'd like to start by thanking, first, the Dixon City Barrel Building for allowing us to take the time and come here and use their equipment and move all their furniture around to get this presentation started. So, I'd like to thank them. My solicitor, John Sarah, for taking the time out and for helping me put all this together. And the Chief Financial Officer, Tom Durkin, who has put together a great presentation that we're going to explain later on, as well as Jessica Ozak, who has graciously come in to help with the videos. And she works in our IT department. Obviously, Mark, for coming and visiting from ECTV. I like to keep the format very informal. There's already been a lot of money spent on videos that I didn't feel were worth the time or money put into them. So, I just decided to go ahead and talk to the people and show them a couple of things that I think are important to know in regards to reassessment. A few rules while I'm speaking. I'm going to be just presenting a few of the facts that I think people have asked me about and what I feel is important for you all to know. And then, I'm going to be having our Chief Financial Officer present his information. And then, I'll finish it up. And John is here to help me with any questions that anyone might have in regards to the legal aspects of reassessment, or if there's something that I forgot to talk about, he's going to help me out. And then, any questions, if you can come up to the podium, ask your question from there, and I'll answer as best I can. So, that'll be at the end. But, in the meantime, if I'm speaking, or Tom and I are speaking, and you still don't understand what we're saying, please feel free to raise your hand and ask us to repeat it so that you understand what we're talking about. Because reassessment is a complicated issue. Taxes are a complicated issue. And I really wanted our informational sessions to be more about helping you to know what's going to happen. If a reassessment occurs, understand how we get to reassessment, what it entails, where your taxes come from, and where your millage rates come from. So, I hope that I'm able to present that to you in a way that you're able to understand in a better manner. So, I answered a few of the questions as to why I'm having this meeting so far. And I envisioned meetings throughout the county, not just in two days, but throughout the month, at different times, especially in the evening, for folks to come out after work, working hours, and be able to learn about what happens rather than during the daytime when they can't make it. I started the evening meetings for a reason. My fellow commissioners allowed me to do those. And I thought it was very important to make sure that we have more in the evening for people to be able to come out and hear the information that really is going to affect their taxes. I wanted to show you a few of the videos that are more in-depth than the one that we presented, and something that I really wished that we had done. So, I do have the links that are provided, and I have a handout with them. I encourage anyone that can. I'm going to start from here, so you can pass them out. You guys pass those back. Yep. Give him one else. I just want one. Yeah. Jessica is going to show you the links up on the screen. This is Blair County. They did a reassessment. And they're understanding reassessment videos really good. They also have a town hall one. And it's an hour long, but it really does go into more detail. And it's more geared to in favor of reassessment. However, it has a lot of information that it provides with question and answer series that really are helpful, I think, to anyone that might be going through reassessment potentially, or has any questions in regards to how they got there and what's going to happen. They go through the process and they answer many questions that I think a lot of people need to be aware of. So, although I can't show you those videos because of copyright laws, it would be great if you get the time to go and look at those. Also, another video that came out was through the League of Women Voters. And they will not allow, through copyright, for anyone to use them in their presentations, but they will allow us to send the link out. So, the link is there, and they're also on the paperwork that I just handed out to you as well. There's a gentleman from P L. that is presenting in that video. He talks about how it's going to affect us as a whole, as a county. And it is, again, more geared in favor of reassessment. And this fairness issue that I'll go into more, but that seems to be the catchphrase in all of these reassessments that I disagree with. He does refer to information on P L. central.org. And it's a communities in crisis. I encourage anyone to look this up and read some of the information in here, because I'm going to go through a lot of what's in here tonight. But, it's interesting to see some of the perspectives about how, you know, financially distressed some of our municipalities are. As you all could see, it's happening in Scranton and throughout our county. In the newspapers, you can see the list when there's an upset sale, and it just goes on and on. The biggest question I've been asked is why put this on the ballot? First of all, let me explain the first problem we had. I have never been for reassessment. I've always shared, before I got elected and after, that I am against reassessment. The reason being, I think it's going to be harmful to a lot of people, not just the elderly, but middle-class folks that may have inherited their properties from their parents, and then they did major renovations on it and fixed it up, but they're still at the millage rate that their parents had had it at. I think that it's going to cost a fortune, which I think 13 million is a low-ball number. Now, I could be wrong, but I'm going to tell you that's my opinion, based on the costs of other counties and the costs that we incurred already in the past. Thirdly, it takes two votes to pass anything in the commissioner's office. So, because I'm against reassessment, if I put a motion out, and I said, "I'm putting a motion out to not perform reassessment," Commissioner O'Malley would not second that vote. Commissioner Notterianni would not second that vote. It wouldn't pass. If Commissioner Notterianni put a motion on the table to do a reassessment, I would not give him the second to bring that to the table, and Commissioner O'Malley would not give him the second to bring that to the table. So, we have a stalemate. So, what do we do? We chose, actually, the suggestion was brought up by Commissioner O'Malley, to put it on the ballot. And, you know, I asked him before I came, I said, "Is there anything that you want me to ...?" And I asked Commissioner Notterianni the same thing. "Is there anything that you want me to tell people in regards to how you feel about reassessment? I'd be happy to share your message with them, if you'd like." And Commissioner Notterianni is a very humble man, and he's very gracious. He trusted me to say that he just is against reassessment, and he respects my view that I'm opposed to it. And Commissioner O'Malley is a very gentle soul, who's always concerned about people and how things are going to affect them. And, you know, he said with, you know, he's correct in saying that the last reassessment, we spent, Tom, what, eight?
It was approximately eight and a half million dollars, Commissioner.
Eight and a half million dollars. Another administration comes in and decides that they can't afford it. They don't have the money. So, it's done. It's squashed. With this going on the ballot, if it passes, if we can, if the taxpayers say to us, "Yes, you can incur that debt, take out that loan to pay for a reassessment," it can never be stopped or halted. It has to go through, because the taxpayer said yes to incur that debt. So, none of that money would be wasted. And that's one of the biggest points that Commissioner O'Malley wants to bring out. And the fact that, you know, we all feel that the taxpayers should have a say in whether or not they're going to have their taxes increased to pay for the loan that we're going to have to take out to do the reassessment. And yes, there will have to be a loan taken out to do the reassessment. You know, we always hear about the surplus. We do have a small surplus that we're working with. But, every year, costs go up. Right now, in 2018, we're looking at a deficit budget, and we're trying to plug that deficit with other cuts. We've been working on it for months. If we don't plug that deficit, we can use our surplus to pay for those costs next year, and then go into the next budget hearing next year with the same exact problem, and then use another three or four million dollars. And Tom, I'm going to refer to Tom to tell us where are we at with the amount of money we have, and when will that be depleted to the point where we'll lose our credit rating?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
As of December 31, 2016, which is the last year that was audited, obviously because 2017 isn't completed yet, as of December 31, 2016, the county's accumulated surplus, fund balance, is a little more than 19 million dollars. Back in 2015, the county went to Standard &amp; Poor's and asked Standard &amp; Poor's to rate the county, because for about five years prior to that, we did not have an investment-grade rating. If we don't have an investment-grade rating, costs of borrowing are pretty much quadrupled anytime we need to borrow money for anything. So, Standard &amp; Poor's told us at the time that they expect municipal governments, including counties, to have a surplus that amounts to approximately 10% of their county budget. Our county budget in 2018, as Commissioner Cummings said, is not 100% complete yet. But, at the present time, that county budget is about 123 million dollars. Clearly, 10% of 123 million dollars is roughly 12 million dollars. If we were to fall below the 12 million dollars, then we would very, very likely lose our investment-grade rating, and, again, the cost of county government would go up probably quadruple anytime that we needed to borrow. As Commissioner Cummings said, we are in a deficit position so far with the 2018 budget. That deficit is approximately 2.3 million dollars. We're anticipating that we will likely see a small deficit in 2017, when we complete 2017 and it gets audited. We're anticipating probably a deficit in the area of about a million dollars for 2017. So, as Commissioner Cummings said, the million dollars will deplete the fund balance that we had in '16. 2.3 million dollars deficit right now for '18 will once again deplete that 19 million dollar surplus that we had. And as, again, Commissioner Cummings said, as everybody is well aware, costs don't go down from year to year. Everybody, I'm certain everybody understands in their household, that their expenses increase every year, utilities go up, the cost of fuel goes up, pretty much everything goes up. The cost of bread and butter goes up every year. Well, the same is true with the county. We anticipate that the county's expenses increase between 1 and 3/4 million and $2 million annually. Consequently, we're looking at, if we do have a 2.3 million dollar deficit in '18, we're looking at potentially a $4 million deficit in 2019 for the budget, which then would, by that time, and I haven't done the math in my head, but deplete our 19 million dollar surplus down very near, if not below, the 12.3 million dollars that we need to maintain in order for Standard &amp; Poor's to look at us favorably and allow us to keep our investment-grade rating.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Does everybody understand what that explanation was? Is there anybody that has a question on that? Okay. The other question, I'm just going to stand so I could see everybody back there. The other question I've been getting is, why didn't we ask for a referendum for the Globe Store? The Globe Store is not a cost to the county at this point, because when we entered the Globe, we're giving up all of our rental properties and consolidating. And this was something that many of us ran on, was consolidation of offices. So, the cost of the loan that we took out is somewhere in the area of 1.3 million a year, correct? 1.3?
That is correct.
Okay. So, the cost of the rentals plus utilities was 1.5 million. So, in actuality, we're saving over 200 and some thousand dollars by consolidating the offices into the Globe. So, there was no tax increase because of that. We don't anticipate a tax increase because of that, and therefore, we didn't need to put it on the ballot because of that. We did utilize funding to pay for the Globe. That was, you know, money that we had in our, I believe, economic development, was it?
That is correct.
Yeah. So, there was really no loan taken out as of this point, and we were able to garner an actual loan from the banks rather than a bond issue. So, that's actually saving us, that we're not actually paying into that loan yet, until we actually spend money on the renovations that are occurring at the Globe. So, you know, we've done a really good job of trying to maintain the money going out and the money coming in, so that we're all on the same page with not increasing any Is there anyone that doesn't understand that, the answer to that question? Onto what actually happens with, after a post-assessment. I asked Tom Durkin to help me with this. Reassessment on our video, I think we have a couple of different things on our reassessment video that were explained, but they were very brief. There's much more that goes into a reassessment than what I think they showed in the video for our county. And, let's see, how many different areas? They have data collection, computerization of data, market studies, final estimates, notifications, informal reviews, formal appeals. The KAMA system, I think it could have gone into more in-depth, like they do in the other video, and they show you exactly what you'll be able to see once that goes into place. There's a system for mass appraisals that they have to look at, and the GIS system, which explains how it works as well, because they're two different programs, correct, Tom? The GIS and the KAMA?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. And I think a lot of people want to know what questions are going to be asked when these people come to my home, and what am I going to have to fill out? And we didn't have that in our video. It was just very basic. The other videos that I sent you to from Blair County, they were very in-depth in showing the form that you might get, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms, the property size, different questions that might be asked. And it shows you the form that you might be asked to fill out, what kind of credentials the people that are coming in are going to have, because there was a lot of complaints previously that people didn't have the qualifications, and that's why some of the assessments weren't done as well, appropriately. So, you want to make sure that you get the right company to do that. And the field data collection is really, really important to make sure that you have an accurate assessment. They also go into a neighborhood market data. And a gentleman was talking to me before, there might be a floodplain that makes your, you know, house worth less in your mind, that you can discuss in an informal review. Okay. Did I forget anything in that part?
Commissioner, on the cost, and I don't know if it had been stressed enough, but so that there would be no mistake about it, the question asked whether to pass, you know, for a tax, the referendum for a tax, to take out a loan for the reassessment of around 13 million dollars. The bottom line would seem to be that the county, based on what Tom has just said and what has been analyzed, is going to have to increase taxes to do a reassessment.
Right.
So, I'm going to say that again. Being asked to increase taxes to take out a loan to pay for reassessment. Now, that has nothing to do with the reassessment or what effect that would have in and of itself, but there would be two ways to do it. One, to make sure that that money gets spent and it never gets lost by somebody else. You could amortize it or pay it off in maybe a period of two or three years, which is the time for the reassessment to maybe take place. That would be a significant tax. The only other way to do it would be to probably amortize it over maybe a 30-year bond issue or something like that, which means there would be a much smaller amount. But, make no mistake about it, there would be a tax increase, which is not anticipated for anything else, just to do this. And that's a significant point that I don't think I saw in that video that was presented, which was one of the complaints with it. And there were a number of complaints and a lot of discussions about it.
Thank you, John.
If I may, John, speaking of the amortization, the money, the 13 million dollars includes a number of things. It includes the actual spend for the company to go out and do the physical reassessment. It also includes theoretically the cost of software, to update our assessor's office software, theoretically, the cost of employing some additional people for the assessor's office. So, all of those numbers kind of play into the 13 million. But, as far as amortization, the cost of reassessment itself, so whatever we pay somebody to come and do the physical reassessment, my understanding is, after talking to bond counsel, is that that cost can be amortized over no longer than 10 years.
So, it would be a higher tax.
10 years, right.
A higher tax.
Right.
Well, that's why we have a financial guy here.
That's right.
So, it can't, probably not a 30-year, it's probably a 10-year.
We're not experts, but we're trying our best to make sure that you know as much as we do, so that you can make an informed decision come November. So, thank you very much for that. So, it's a 10-year?
You're welcome.
Highest, okay. And it also goes through, the other videos that I looked at on the form that I sent you for Blair County, they go through everything. Notice of assessment from start to finish, and what you can expect in an informal appeal. And they show you someone going through all this, and they have a town hall meeting. So, these are some of the things that I was hoping to have in our video that we didn't have. So, that's why I'm here tonight, hoping to make sure that I can further explain what a reassessment is and what's going to happen once it's done. Okay. Everything, do you think I went through everything okay there? Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything, because this is a really important issue to me. I don't want to be biased in any way towards no reassessment, because I want to make sure you get the full picture of everything. Even though I'm against reassessment, I want you to understand everything. Tom, can you tell the taxpayers, what does revenue neutral mean, and explain how that affects our county? And on these sheets, explain that to them. And I'll hand these out to the people.
Okay. When you get a copy of the sheets that the commissioner's handing out, there's actually three different sets of examples, and I'll explain those in more depth in just a little while. But, the reality is, under state law, any county that does a reassessment is prohibited from increasing tax revenue in the year that the reassessment is implemented strictly from the reassessment. So, that, and on the sheet, you'll see that I did a little example. The county's millage is currently 57.42 mills. If we do a reassessment, and my assumption on these pieces of paper, and trust me, there is no authority to these assumptions whatsoever, I have no idea what the total value of the property in Lackawanna County would be, the taxable property, once reassessed. But, for example purposes, I just assumed that the total value of all taxable county properties after the reassessment would double. It would go from 1.5 billion to 3 billion. And again, those numbers are only for purposes of my examples. But, having said that, if that is what were to happen, because we can't, and not just we, no taxing authority in Lackawanna County, meaning municipalities and school districts, no taxing authority could make more tax revenue in the year that a reassessment is implemented. Consequently, if our tax base, all taxable properties in the county, increased by two times, from 1.5 billion to 3 billion, we would be required by that state law to take our millage and adjust it down by one-half. And in my examples here, it would go from 57.42 down to 28.71, because then, the 28.71 mills, based on the $3 billion assessed value, would equal exactly the same amount of tax revenue after the reassessment as tax revenue the year before the reassessment.
Thank you, Tom. Yes?
The law has stated about revenue neutral. Doesn't it also have a provision in there that it could be within 10%?
Could you go to the podium, Michael, please?
Yeah.
A lot of your citing about being revenue neutral, doesn't it also have a provision in there that it could be within 10% of the current taxes collected?
What the law says, Michael, is that strictly from the reassessment, no municipal taxing authority can have more tax revenue in the year following a reassessment than they did in the year prior to reassessment. It then does go on to say that if the taxing authority chooses, they can, by separate resolution, they can increase taxes by up to 10%.
10%.
First year.
In the first year, that's correct.
Yeah. There's a lot of things that I've heard about revenue neutrality, and there's a lot of misconceptions. One person insisted revenue neutrality means a third goes up, a third goes down, a third stay the same. Completely, absolutely incorrect. There's, and by the way, there's absolutely no authority or statistics to support that one-third, one-third. They talk about it generally, but no one has shown me anything which establishes that, which is kind of funny, the way it always seems to be used. A second thing about revenue neutrality is, Tom gave you an example, I think, that refers to one specific property with one specific value. I tend to think of it in terms of a taxing unit. The best unit that I can think of is actually the city of Scranton. You have to look at your property, and you have to look at how that property fares in terms of three different taxing entities: the city, the school district, and the county. So, we have to look at how you fare with all these three entities as a whole. The best example, I think, is Scranton. For example, if Scranton collects, the city collects a million dollars in taxes, that's just an example, before reassessment, they cannot, they have to collect a million after reassessment. So, if the Scranton School District collects $2 million before reassessment total, for the whole unit, they have to collect $2 million afterwards. So, Scranton is unique. The only taxes that could possibly go down in Scranton are county, because the same amount has to come out for the city, and the same amount has to come out for the school. I was at the mayoral debate last night, and two of the candidates said they favor reassessment. They kind of animated that this will be good, because our taxes will go down. No, city taxes will stay the same as a whole. They may be spread out differently in the unit. School taxes are going to remain the same. County taxes may go down, but of the three taxes, I don't think there's any dispute. County is the one that does not seem to be that burdensome on anybody. So, that's a significant thing, and it appears in, I think, Scranton and Dunmore, because the- And it appears in, I think, Scranton and Dunmore, because the units are the same for the school and the borough. City and the school district are the same. It is a little different as you get into areas where the school districts are composed of several municipalities. But the revenue neutrality says that within ten percent for the first year, it has to pretty much stay the same. We asked the expert that was hired, what about after that? What about after the first year? And the answer was, anything can happen, which is, you know, as much as saying taxes could continue to go up. One of the unusual things, I was with Commissioner Cummings, the Borough of German actually asked for reassessment. They sent a letter recommending it. And we went to the meeting, and I heard the council president say, you know, she asked, why do you want this? And he said, well, the way I understand it, the millage will go down, so because if the millage goes down, it'll be easier for us to raise taxes. Because we can't raise taxes now, because we have to go to court to do it. So if you trust your municipal officials to be prudent and not to raise taxes, I guess it's fine. But in a sense, it invites just what people really, really don't want. And this man actually said that. I believe there are two or three people on Scranton City Council that have said pretty much the same thing. There is, in many municipalities, there is a requirement they cannot go any further with their taxes. We saw this in Scranton with different types of taxes. They can't do it. This lowers the millage, but allows them to say, oh, we can now raise it. The other unique thing about people in office, and I don't know, not all of them.
Not me.
But, you know, it's very easy. Well, you know, your millage was fifty, your millage is now twenty-five after reassessment. We're only going to raise it five mills. It's not nearly as bad as it was before. Well, it is as bad, because you're still paying the same amount of taxes.
Exactly.
But it's very easy to justify and say, we're not doing that bad. We're only giving you a little tax increase. And those are the facts that I think need to be brought out. There are issues on both sides of this. And one of the problems I think Commissioner Cummings had, and it's been a continual fight, is not all of that has been presented. That's the information. Everybody can use it any way they want.
Thank you, John. Staying on that frame of thinking, these are examples of the Cali tax, right here. And what Mr. Durkin has done is, if your millage is at twelve thousand, there's one for example, if your millage is at twelve thousand, and the different scenarios that you might pay regarding that. Each page has a different scenario, which we didn't get a chance to go through yet. But in regards to what Solicitor Sarah was just talking about, the P E L report also discusses this, and they talk about the thirty-mill real estate tax cap in the state third-class city and borough codes is completely arbitrary. The value of a mill is dependent on a community's assessment, and so changes from one municipality to the next. And they call it stale assessments, that keep, that have this cap is a problem for some of the areas, because raising taxes a couple of mills might bring in limited funds depending on the value of a mill, while residents become obsessed over what appears to be a hefty tax hike. So it's just a continual narrative that they use. They have this one example that says, well, the relative value of both levies might be the same, which is just what you said, the perception of the higher millage number makes it tough. So it's a perception, is that what they're talking about? So they even put that on economic development, and they say, people will come into our area for economic development if they think our millage is lower, like, because Wilkes-Barre just went through, or Luzerne County went through reassessment. Their millage might be, you know, ten, and the amount that you would pay in taxes would be a thousand dollars. Whereas if you came to Lackawanna County and it was forty, you'd still be paying a thousand dollars. Just the millage rate had no bearing. So that's what they're talking about.
Commissioner Cummings, I was talking last night in anticipation of this meeting, and Commissioner Cummings raised something in our discussion that no one had even thought about before. And we said we would think about bringing it up. There's currently a lawsuit in Scranton over some miscellaneous taxes where they're over the cap on stuff. The cap happens to be based, at least in one instance, on assessed values.
Right.
So if the assessed values go up with a reassessment, which they will, okay, the cap gets bigger. So you have a very interesting situation where certain taxes, right now, are probably going to be determined to be illegal by court decision, whereas if the reassessment value goes up, they're fine. They're fine, okay? So you have an illegal tax, that's not all of a sudden, fine. So if anybody wonders why, again, certain office holders are in favor of a reassessment, the reasons are pretty obvious, as far as I'm concerned. And that's why Commissioner Cummings has said, look at the interest of the person that's supporting or against.
Right.
Which is, as a lawyer, that's what I do every day, for the benefit of some people who don't understand that, and I'm obviously talking to somebody that's not in the room. Every judge is required to give an instruction that you consider whether the person testifying or giving evidence, or coming at a public meeting like this, has an interest in the outcome of the case. If they have an interest, it should be exposed, and then let the people, or in my case, many cases, let a jury decide.
Thank you, thank you, John. So back on to our forms. I want Mr. Durkin to go through the twelve-thousand-dollar property, if you can go to that. And we'll go page by page, so he can explain to you exactly what the differences are there.
As Commissioner said, there are three sets of papers stapled together. Each set has four examples within it. And the difference between the three sets are just that the theoretical single property assessed that I'm using are different values. So if you look at the one, example one, of the sheet that has a single property assessment at twelve thousand dollars before reassessment. As I said, in order to simplify things, I use round numbers. I have no idea if there's a reassessment, what the new assessed value would be. I just assumed, for purposes of these examples, that the assessed value, which is currently approximately one point five billion, that number is not exact, but it's pretty close to what the number is. And I assumed that that would double to three billion dollars. As I also said, the county millage is currently fifty-seven point four-two mills. After reassessment, by law, that would be required to be reduced by one-half, so that the total taxes after the reassessment on the newly created three-billion-dollar total assessed value of all taxable county properties, times the millage, would equal the same amount as before the reassessment. Then below that, I show that if a single property were currently assessed at twelve thousand dollars, and we chose the twelve-thousand-dollar number, because on average, at the current time, the county's average assessed value of properties in the assessor's database, the average assessed value is twelve thousand dollars. It's actually eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, I believe. So that's why we use twelve thousand. It's the average number, actual average. Well, based on current millage, if your single property is assessed at twelve thousand dollars, the county tax levy, based on the fifty-seven point four-two mills, would be six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and four cents. In my first example, if that same single property that was assessed at twelve thousand dollars, after reassessment, increases to thirty-six thousand dollars, if you look on the right-hand column, you'll see that's a three-hundred percent increase. Comparable to all county properties, which is the top line, was a two-hundred percent increase. If that were the case, and the single property, the assessed value increased as a ratio to the whole, more than the whole, then your property taxes will go up. So if it goes from twelve to thirty-six, based on the new assessed value times the new millage rate, instead of six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, you would be paying one thousand thirty-six dollars, fifty-six cents. Page two in that same set is example number two. All the other underlying data is the same. The only exception being that instead of the twelve thousand being assessed for thirty-six thousand under reassessment, it would only be assessed at fifteen thousand, as you can see on the right-hand column. That would only be a hundred and twenty-five percent after reassessment of the current assessed value. And as you can see, the hundred and twenty-five is clearly less than the two-hundred percent that all county taxable properties increased by. Consequently, since the increase in the single property is lower than the average increase in all properties, your taxes would go down on that property, based on the reduction in millage. From six eighty-nine oh four before reassessment, down to four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-five cents after reassessment. The next page is, again, same example. The only exception is, instead of the twelve-thousand-dollar property being reassessed at either thirty-six or fifteen thousand, the twelve-thousand-dollar property would be assessed at twenty-four thousand. That twenty-four thousand dollars is exactly the same pro rata as all county taxable properties, two-hundred percent. Consequently, somebody who that happened to would pay exactly the same tax, because their assessment would have gone up twice, the millage would have decreased by one-half, and the tax burden would be six eighty-nine oh four, prior to assessment and after reassessment. The fourth page in this packet is the last possible outcome of reassessment. I think this is highly unlikely, but it is possible that a property that were assessed at twelve thousand dollars was reassessed at less than the twelve thousand dollars before reassessment. As I said, I believe it's unlikely, but it is possible, so I wanted to show that example too. So if a property that were assessed at twelve thousand before the reassessment was assessed at ten thousand after the reassessment, it would actually be reduced eighty-three percent of what it was. Clearly, the eighty-three percent is less than the two-hundred percent that the average properties of all county properties had increased by. And therefore, the taxes after reassessment would be reduced from six eighty-nine oh four before reassessment to two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents after reassessment. Would you like me to continue, Commissioner?
No, I think if they, if there's any questions on that, does everybody understand how that all went? I think he did a really good job of explaining all that, I really do.
If I may, the other two examples that you have, or the other two sets of paper you have, the theory is exactly the same. The only difference is that instead of a twelve-thousand-dollar property, one set of sheets is based on a thirty-thousand-dollar pre-reassessment property, and the third set is based on a property pre-reassessment that was assessed at fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, and those assessment numbers are what you would see on your tax bill, and what they would be sending you if your assessment were to change? That would be the number that you would see? Tom, could you tell them how you come about that number? Because I didn't understand a lot about millage rates, and it's just you times it by a thousand, or you divide it by a thousand, right?
Commissioner, the, one mill of tax is, in order to determine, based on the millage, what the tax would be, based on what your assessed value is, is just that. You take your assessed value and divide it by one thousand, and then multiply it by the number of mills to come up with the tax rate would be.
Okay. Does everybody understand how you got that number? Because that wasn't listed on here. So I just want to make sure you understood how you got there.
Just one sheet you was talking about, is that just the first year?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Is this just the first year that you're talking about, what it would be after reassessment?
Yes.
After reassessment, yes.
Yes. Before, yeah.
What you just saw was Tom Durkin, we're salary employees, so it doesn't, you know, we don't get paid, you know, but anymore to do this, which is fine, that's the job, okay? But you just saw Tom Durkin give a pretty good example of what takes place when we were discussing what to present to the public on this. And I think it should be known, Commissioner Cummings was in favor of doing exactly what you just saw. And we had people to do this and explain it, because we're fairly well-versed on the subject, or at least we should be. Instead, the Board of Commissioners determined that it was appropriate to spend about nineteen thousand dollars on a video, and another seven thousand dollars on lawyers. The same simple example that he could give for nothing was actually not contained in the video, even though, even though I believe Commissioner Cummings, when it was discussed, asked that something as simple as that be explained. So there had been a lot of money spent on this, which I think that's the reason we're here, is it was kind of hard to understand that, why it was such a big deal, and why it couldn't have been done in-house, and why the commissioners aren't here to answer, whether you agree or disagree with Commissioner Cummings or any of the other commissioners.
Thanks, John. I hope that I was able to present you with something that is understandable, and I hope that having our chief financial officer, who does an excellent job explaining things, was helpful to you. There's going to be more questions, I still have a couple more things I wanted to talk about, but the one issue that always comes up is this fairness issue. You know, I don't know, is there anybody here who purchased their house that actually knows how much money they're going to be paying in taxes when they're seventy-five years old?
Or.
Now, I invested in my property, and I say this to everyone, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to, sorry, Louise. I say this to everyone. The biggest problem I have with this whole entire law that we have called property tax and reassessment and the way it works, is that it literally punishes people for maintaining their property throughout their life, for spending hundreds of thousands of dollars throughout their life, maintaining their property, or the property that their parents and family have handed down to them. And now, because they maintained it and took care of it and kept their neighborhood clean and presentable, they're punished with a tax increase. We had a gentleman by the name of Chaz Brewer that came in and gave an example of his mother-in-law at the county, who her dying wish, her wish in her will was to please make sure that she died at home. That's all she wanted, just make sure I die at home. She lives up in, she lived up in Greenfield Township, and she had a farm with cattle. Her income for the year was about, I think it was ten thousand dollars, and she got a thousand or two in hay sales. The son-in-law and daughter decided to take care of her and her property, and, you know, her taxes for the year were sixty-eight hundred dollars. So she makes twelve thousand, her taxes are sixty-eight hundred, and she's got, you know, what, six thousand left over for her food, her lights, her electric, her gas, medical expenses, and that's just ridiculous. This law has to be changed. That's the bottom line. Our state legislatures are very aware of the situation. I have proposed and lobbied for House Bill Seventy-Six for years and years. It's also a flawed law, but the one good part of that law is that when you no longer work, you no longer pay taxes on property, unless you're going to go out and buy a big expenditure on a sales tax. That works for me, you know, because I don't think anybody over the age of sixty-five or seventy should have to pay anymore into the hundreds of thousands of dollars they've invested into their property and into the community through their employer's taxes, their property taxes, municipal, state, and local taxes, this tax, that tax, they're taxed to death. When do you get a break from all this?
When you die.
No, you have to pay the tax.
It's time. It's time for us to make a change.
Georgia does that.
Georgia?
My ex-wife lives there, and she told me.
Nice, well, we're still stuck here. I'm trying to...
Just turning somewhat what you said before about the future taxes.
Sir, could you please go to the podium, please?
No, you're okay, we can hear you.
Okay.
I offered Mr. McGough, I told him I'll pay two years' taxes if it keep the same rate, and he wouldn't, he said they won't do that, they were already going up.
Yeah. Well, and the simple fact of the matter is, is that taxes consistently go up every year in our collection process, so, and Tom, if you can answer, we might only be collecting the same amount, 57.42 every year, but we're bringing in more money every year, I mean, and we didn't raise taxes. And that's just through people buying new properties, and that new property is assessed, new developments throughout the county, you know, I mean, that's just a given. All the hands went up when I said that. Go ahead, hang on.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming down.
Can you come up?
Yeah, just say your name. But you said one key word that I zeroed right in on, taxes are not fair.
That's right.
Okay? I just recently built a new house in Dixon City here. When I got my taxes, I thought I was living in New York City, not Dixon City. I mean, it is outrageous. This whole county is outrageous because the tax system isn't fair. You look at these people here, I don't know how many are doctors or lawyers, but I don't think too many are. We're getting squeezed till we can't even live here anymore.
Yeah.
And we have no place to go. The people in Scranton can't sell their properties because nobody wants to buy them, they're only, they're on a sinking ship. But what I'm getting at is, why can't the county, I do a lot of traveling, why can't the county institute a county sales tax? It's fair to everybody, oh, I'm sorry, it's fair to everybody, okay? You spend a lot, you pay a lot. You don't spend much, you don't pay much, okay? You get revenue from people that come into the area, to go to the racetrack, or wherever, even if they're passing through. When I travel, I pay a hotel bill, I have a hotel tax, I have a county tax, I have a state tax, there's a list of taxes for everything you do. Why can't we do that here and do away with the school tax and property tax? There's people on that reassessment, you're talking reassessment, I would be willing to bet you a week's salary that there are people in this county that aren't even on the books, that don't even pay taxes because of nepotism in this county and the crookedness in this county, they're not even on the books.
That's right.
Okay? So to be fair, if you put a sales tax on, everybody pays it, if you're a renter, if you're just passing through, whatever. You would have more money than you would know what to do with. I mean, more money to squander probably, because it seems like for every two we take in, we spend four. But still, it would be fair to everybody, I think more so than what we're talking about. And I don't know if you can do a county sales tax.
Yeah, you can.
Well, that's what I have to say.
As a matter of fact, sir, if I may, there is a state law known as the Local Tax Enabling Act that limits what municipalities and other municipal governments like counties can charge taxes for. I don't know that much about it, but if we were going to implement a sales tax, it would have to be through the permission of the state. The state would have to approve it before we did, and then we would be limited into how much, as to how much we would be able to charge through a sales tax. I know, I don't know the details, sir, as to what the limits are, but we are limited into what, I mean, we can't charge, the county can't charge a wage tax, for example. By law, we're not allowed to do that. Municipalities, cities, boroughs can charge a wage tax, school districts can. We're not allowed under the Local Tax Enabling Act. And I know the sales tax is one of the things that counties are allowed to assess sales tax, but in a limited nature, and I'm just not sure off the top of my head what the limit is.
Well, I know the state is trying to come up with this.
Yes.
To do away with taxes.
Well, that's in House Bill 76.
Raising the state tax. They were all supposed to like ease up, ease the taxpayer's burden when they put it into casinos and everything else, but nobody has seen that money either because it went to Pittsburgh to build a hockey stadium, you know? So, I mean, it's just like, and let me ask you this, if it costs $13 million to do the reassessment, and if you cover every house in the county, how much money do you think you would recoup to make that $13 million spend worthwhile?
You don't, you don't. There isn't any, nothing.
Nothing.
The answer's zero.
He's just throwing it away.
You're just throwing it away?
Yes, the answer's zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think Frank had, and then, I still have a little bit left, and then...
Good evening, Frank Scavell, School Board Director, Old Ford School District. And I'm concerned, just like the Scranton School District, we're standalone, John. We don't, we're not a jointure, we don't...
You're the same, you're the same position.
We have one town with residents of 8,800, median income of around $30,000. And my question is, so we do a reassessment, we spend $13 million, the taxes stay the same, yet like you said, overzealous elected officials that don't actually care about the senior citizens or working families, that then will use that to raise taxes because they were up against their limit before, and with the reassessment, we dropped their rates, and now we can raise it up again. So I guess my question is, we don't, a school board director doesn't get to vote on that. All we get to do is vote on raising our budgets and raising your taxes. So the $13 million that you said could only be amortized over 10 years, that's going to be an effective immediate tax increase.
Correct, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then the school district is also, because with Peasars contributions and everything else, we're also going to have to immediately enact, because we don't get to vote on Peasars contributions. We're going to have to raise taxes because of the strain of the pension debacle. So the taxpayer in Lackawanna County, if they vote for this, and that's their free will, I applaud the commissioners and you two gentlemen for being here to explain this, they're voting themselves almost two tax increases. You're going to get the $13 million...
Debt services.
Somebody's paying for that, nothing, these assessors aren't going to work for free, we're going to pay for them. And then you're going to have your normal school district increases that come along with it. So I guess my question to you is, if this were to go through, what would happen to those people that come into the city of Scranton or Lackawanna County and buy up some of these foreclosures and then invest money into them, taking away the blight they put in, new sidewalks, siding? That's not really going to be that economically viable at that point, because you're going to be taxed, you know, you buy a building at a foreclosure and it's a lower tax rate, and then they come in and reassess, and all of a sudden, all the improvements that you've done, you're going to be taxed at a higher rate on because you actually helped the community, helped local market values, and now you'll pay more for doing that. Am I correct in that?
I do have an example. Today I did talk, I was over, they were having the appeal hearings today, and I was speaking to two of the gentlemen in our office, and, you know, Scranton does have a new program that they started where for the first three years, they're going to, basically, you're going to not have to pay your taxes for three years. And this is an incentive to businesses, I believe it was, wasn't it, that we passed through our office? I think it was like new purchase, new buildings in Scranton. So we already had...
I think it's rehab buildings, Commissioner.
Is it rehab to the repository list?
It's rehab, yeah.
So we had someone in our assessors' office that was looking to lower the taxes before they even had to pay them. So to your example, yes, it's an issue.
And that's...
And they know it's going to be a problem.
But in Taylor, Music, Old Ford, they don't have that program. So you make those improvements, improve the neighborhood, have people finally say, you know, that the house that was next door that was blight, you're now going to be punished.
Frank, in theory, once a reassessment occurs, okay, in theory now, then everybody's brought up to par, supposedly there's a magic moment. The question, you know, of course, is how long does that last? But assuming that would last for a long time, which is ridiculous as far as I'm concerned, in theory, I buy a property that's, you know, foreclosure, and I'm going to dump 30 grand into it, okay? Well, between what I pay for it and the permits I file, they automatically jack me up. At that time, it will be very hard to avoid the tax increase on the improvements because they'll want to keep me with, even with everybody else, okay? Basically, to avoid another costly reassessment five years later, okay? So there'll be an incentive to keep everybody there, okay? The problem with that is, is what does that do to a person who wants to invest?
Exactly.
You know, that's an issue. What's the answer to it? I have no idea. But that's why we're here, because that's something that should be put out.
That's going to happen.
Yeah, it should, people should know that and say, hey, wait a second, that's good, that's bad, or whatever. But that's certainly a valid issue.
So with that hanging over your head, now you're buying a property and you just become a slumlord. You make it look as bad as possible so that during reassessment, you're not reassessed at a higher rate.
Right.
And then the neighbors complain that this is, this is, so, and then they expect government to somewhat subsidize it.
Okay.
But let me ask you this final question, because this is going to happen to my mom. You know, all the weekend projects that we did, putting in new sidewalks, putting in a paver, driveway, putting in a garage, putting in a pool, so now Mr. Assessor comes down, and this is the question I have, and he sees all of this new improvements that we've done on money that we've already paid taxes on, because it's our income, it's been taxed once, I see property taxes as a second tax, and that's not fair in my book, but now they're going to come in and reassess and say, well, now look at all the things that you have and the increase in the value of the property, which we did with our own labor, and now we're going to be reassessed and pay more, which I already had to sign a note for my mom because she's 75, like John asked, or someone asked, how old, you know, how long do you think you'll be paying property taxes, and what would the rate be? Well, she's 75 plus, and I already helped, had to help her out with paying the property taxes because couldn't afford it, so now if I were to vote for reassessment, which I'm not, someone would come in and say, your property's worth more, now you're going to have to pay more, and she can't afford it the way it is, so...
And I am not for it because of that, Frank.
May I?
Sure.
Frank, I was at, again, the mayor's debate last night, and there's statistic tossed around, okay, which I took particular notice of. They said in Scranton, I don't know countywide, but I know Scranton, which is obviously the biggest municipality, at least 30% of the people are elderly and on fixed income, okay? They said at least 30%. That figure was used by several of the candidates, you know, I don't know where it came from, it's not my figure, but if that's the case, at least in Scranton, you know, you have a situation where probably a great majority of those people purchased their properties a long time ago. If that's the case, which it probably is, okay, then their taxes would probably go up for the same reasons you indicated. These are people who could probably least afford it. One of the, and that came out last night, one of the things that Commissioner Cummings had asked when this was being discussed was, before we do this, let's get some answers to a couple questions. Number, and the expert, of course, couldn't answer them. Number one, what's the percentage of the people that are elderly and on fixed income countywide? And of those people, you know, from the average, which could be ascertained from the assessment records, how long have they been in their houses?
Right.
Has it been more than 40 years? Has it been more than 20 years? Because we wanted to know, basically, what percentage of elderly people might be affected by this, which I think people should know, okay? And if I act like I'm irritated about this, I am, because there was a lot to be said that nobody wanted to hear.
Same.
Okay? I've been, I'll be a lawyer 40 years, November, and the saddest thing I've ever seen is a widow...
Right.
Selling her house that couldn't sign the deed, you know, after all these years because she couldn't afford it.
And that's the people I think I'm trying to look out for, and I'm on my way to being a...
And that's not, that's not fear mongering, that's obnoxious and outrageous that that would even be used, that's a reality. And maybe if you sat in a room and saw that, you would know that, or if you sat with Commissioner Cummings, and I still don't know why she does it, but sits at the tax sales to make sure everybody gets a break...
Yes.
Okay? You would maybe understand that, that that's reality. That is not fear mongering.
Before what I've seen, and I really wasn't that educated, now I understand why I will be voting no on this, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank, thank you. Yes, sir, sure.
What he said, I don't know if that's totally, everything's totally true, because you're supposed to take out a building permit when you do things to your house, and that you're supposed to... Take out that building permit, they're supposed to turn it over to the county. When the county gets it, they'll come and do a reassessment on the improvements that you did.
Yeah, and that's another problem that I found in, in one of the complaints is that the permit process isn't being followed. So the local permit process isn't being handed into the county. And, you know, there's, it's a real problem.
It's good.
Well, it might be, but then, you know, this is a valid complaint by those that are for reassessment that say, you know, it's not fair that I had my permit here and I got taxed on it, but yet they, across the street, did this, that, and the other thing, and they didn't get their taxes increased. That's a fair complaint. So, you know, I want to make sure that people understand that there are many, many problems with the property tax law, and that's why it needs to be changed. But the first and foremost biggest problem, and the, you know, what's always left out of discussion is the expenses exceed the revenue. The expenses are exceeding the revenue, period. The government has to stop growing the way it is, or stop spending the way it is, and be more responsible with the taxpayer. Now, with that said, as a county commissioner, I'm finding major problems with sitting and listening to, you know, the negotiations and the big elephant in the room, and what is never discussed and is needed to be discussed is pension reform. We have got to address the pension reform in our municipalities, in our school districts, and I would hope that people would start going to their state legislatures because they're all up for reelection next year. We are going to be electing a new governor next year, possibly. I would suggest you make sure that you know where all of these candidates that are running for governor and for state legislatures stand. They've realized there's too many people losing their homes. P E L's report, if you go to see the report, people are moving out of the cities and into the townships. The cities are going under because the people just can't afford to stay in the cities anymore. Taxes are just too outrageous. That's part of the problem. And then the school districts are trying to meet the demand and the burden of a township and a borough that can't meet that demand because there's not enough people, and the land expansion is gone, you know? Some areas are landlocked, like in German, they're landlocked, and they have, you know, they have no businesses coming in there. As a county commissioner, what I talked to German about was, you know, I have a small business spotlight at the county, and, you know, people are always looking for big companies coming, come into our area. Well, what about the people that live here that are, you know, innovative and are young people? Give them the heroes that start these small businesses to look up to and say, I can do that, and, you know, I mean, that's who's going to be our future, is the generations that are here now. Don't let them leave, let them stay here and build their businesses here. And that's where you're going to get more employment and more tax revenue. This system we have has failed. It's failed, obviously it has failed. We can either go with a solution as House Bill 76 and Senate Bill 76, or we can hope that our legislatures will change the current law and add something to the effect where reassessment is done on sale or transfer of property. Which, I don't know, to me, that sounds very commonsensish, you know, I might be off my rocker, but...
It doesn't cost 13 million.
It doesn't cost $13 million. It might possibly cost the legislatures, the constitution, I don't know if we need a constitutional amendment to change that or add it, but either bill, either the House Bill 76 and Senate Bill 76, or this solution with the reassessment on sale and transfer will require a constitutional amendment anyway. And, you know, that's changing the properties to sales tax instead. So I just would encourage everyone here to make sure that you're meeting with your state legislatures. I will lobby anyone in the state, federal government that you feel is necessary to help you, and I will stand by your sides in trying to relieve you of taxes in any way, shape, or form that I can. You know, I'm... You know, I'm hoping that I was able to present something to you that was helpful, and if anybody has any further questions, feel free to come up, I'd be happy to answer them. Well, thank you very, oh, wait, wait, we have two.
Just real quick, when you were going through the sale or the transfer property, that is what the situation is right now, isn't it?
No.
When someone's sale.
No.
It's not reassessed at all time?
No, it is not. That is a spot assessment, and that is illegal. The definition of a spot assessment is very lengthy, and it's illegal, and, you know, that's, that's, we just had a lawsuit that is pending. What was that one? Actually, was that in Scranton, or?
That was the one in Scranton, or that one guy, that black guy that was mayor, mayor candidate that was there, he was one of the guys that.
That's on the tax, that's on the.
No, that's on the tax, the cap.
That's on the cap, that's on the cap.
Yeah, well, I think what happened was they lost the, on spot.
You talked about Volpe and that other.
No, no.
No, it was not Volpe.
It's, it's because somebody took all of the big businesses to task for their taxes, and the courts ruled that you can't just point a finger at businesses, it has to be a county as a whole. And that's the basic law in doing the tax assessment to begin with. You either have to do it countywide, or you do it on a new building, and there's one other time. Do you know the other rule? There's three rules.
That's yours.
When an expanse in the footprint of a building.
The expanse, thank you, with the permit process. They're the only three times you can reassess. And I can't imagine why they couldn't just change that to include the sale or transfer of a property. And through attrition, we would get rid of any discrepancies or inequities we have. Basic matter of fact is, is the inequities exist a year after the reassessment's done. It's never equal and fair, never. And, you know, I mean, what's your opinion on that?
One of the examples, you know, the justification is fairness, and that's fine, except for, you take a look at Luzerne County and what happened down there. They had a reassessment, okay? At the present time, for this year, there's a thing called the common level ratio, which measures sales and the value of sales, and it's used to analyze the assessed value. Okay, at the present time, Luzerne County has a negative common level ratio. You're saying, what does that mean? Well, if you, it's three, it's three, okay? If you have a house, that means if your house is being taxed at $100,000, okay, the average sales for the property in Luzerne County are $97,000. So every person in Luzerne County right now could go in and get the, the taxes aren't fair to everybody, because they're actually lower than the market price. You're being taxed at a higher value than the sales indicate your property is worth. So if fairness is the issue, I mean, how fair was that? And that was a recent assessment, 2008. And maybe similar counties, you know, you have the one big city, you know, an older city and things like that, so there may be a lot of, a lot of similarities there. That turned out to be a complete debacle in Luzerne County, to the point where they voted everybody out. They changed, that's how upset the taxpayers were in Luzerne County over this.
Changed it to home rule.
Yeah, they changed it. And she has examples of some people.
Yeah.
Where she could give them to you.
It's up on the screen.
Yeah, where the taxes had jumped literally thousands. Yeah, they had to get a, go fund.
That's not, that's not in Luzerne, but this is out in Blair County. Luzerne County, we had a gentleman that was 91, that was on a GoFundMe page, and now there's another gentleman out in Blair County. That's, and show him the picture. The house is appraised at $490,000 now. Show them, show them the house.
Oh, my God.
Now, keep going. There's the garage.
Oh, my God.
Now, wait till you see the last one. That's the other building they were talking about on his property. Those are the three buildings.
Oh, my God.
And the latest updates.
Yeah, and then under latest updates.
I made it bigger. Mr. Clapper's certified appraisal conducted by Four Seasons Appraisals came in at $200,000. That's for the land and the buildings, according to the state certified appraisal firm. The county still claims his property is worth $479,000.
Yeah, so that's how, that's how the fairness works. There were, there were two other things with the fairness which were interesting. The time, you know, when they say a third, a third, a third, the question is, well, that's great, but when do you determine that? When is that determined? And the answer is, it's determined when the assessment is complete, okay? The assessment isn't complete until the first round of appeals are exhausted. So there's a reassessment, a notice goes out, okay, then you can take your appeal to the assessment board. They exhaust all those appeals, they then certify it to the court. Now, there are subsequent appeals, but they don't count those. So that's supposedly when this third, third, third comes in. Well, if that's the case, and you figure that here, okay, how many appeals had to be taken? How many people had to have their taxes raised to get it to a third? The people that were the same on the first round probably didn't. The people that went down on the first round probably didn't. Why do they have thousands of appeals that take two or three years to resolve? That would seem that when the first notices go out, a lot of people get their taxes raised, okay? The second thing is, these systems, I'm familiar with Susquehanna and Wayne, because they had assessments some years ago, but when you took an appeal, they set the system up so that it's burdensome and costly to take that first round of appeal. Right now, there's a big issue in Blair County. You have to have an appraiser. You have to have a certified appraiser. They will not accept the report. They want live testimony. You're saying, so what? Well, that's probably a thousand or a $1,500 bill, okay? That's at your first round of appeal, maybe more. So when, and that brings us to the final point, when you look and say, well, you know, gee, the Board of Realtors says this is a great thing, you know, maybe it's a great thing, or maybe a couple lawyers came in and said this is a great thing. Well, yeah, maybe, maybe great for them, because they'll be doing the appraisals, and how long do you think it will be before you see legal ads on the news, on the TV, come to me, I'll get your taxes reduced, okay? That's what we mean by looking at the interest of parties that are coming in.
Right.
And the same holds true with politicians. You can accept what they say if you want, but keep in mind there's that interest there.
Not us.
A gentleman that was here that said people are off the tax rolls, he's right. That's what I think they mean by fairness, some of it.
Well, fairness, but fairness is never, no, the fairness and equity is what they're talking about post reassessment, and they're saying that it's redistributed fairly among everyone. That's, that's the fairness. As far as the properties that aren't listed, you know, that's just something that we picked up on our last assessment. Didn't we put most of those properties on since the last reassessment?
My.
Yeah.
Back a couple of years ago, they did catch a couple of people.
A lot.
A lawyer up in Springbrook they caught that wasn't on the tax rolls.
Got a lot.
Now, we had a property in Springbrook, and they came up to reassess it there, that one with them, group of people. They had a map there, or a photograph of the thing that they had, that the plane took pictures of, and I think that's what they used to catch the people that had properties that weren't there.
My understanding is that as a result of the reassessment that stopped in 2009, I believe, there were approximately 3,000 properties that weren't on the tax rolls that were added to the tax rolls then.
That's correct. And that is why they were stopped, because those properties then had to be assessed at a cost of possibly, what, 100? It depends, $50 to $125 per assessment, that's 3,000 properties. So it's an additional add-on to the 8 million that we already spent. So that's why they said no, there's no, we can't afford it anymore, it's done. But, you know, it's, it's going to be, in Luzerne County, they're still reassessing, and they're still have, I think they put $750,000 in their budget last year towards appeals following reassessment. And theirs was in 2008, and here we are in 2017.
And they were getting sued by a lot of commercial businesses down there, too.
Well, you know, the farmers are really, like, if you go to, just, I just would ask people that are for reassessment to please go and look at some of the results that have happened in Blair County and throughout other counties, to see the effects it has had on some people. And, you know, I mean, maybe in the end it is fair, but is it really fair to have someone who's lived in their property their entire life, for one person to lose it just because of fairness? I mean, they, that, nobody, like I said when I first, when I first asked, how many of you here today know what you're going to be paying in property taxes when you're 75 years old? And did you budget for it?
I don't care.
It's, that, yeah, that's, it's, it's just not something that people look towards, and they look towards their property becoming an asset, not a detriment.
If somebody's off the tax rolls, is that their, like, number, maybe, that they could call and, and file a complaint, and someone can check on it, just to shut them up?
No, we cannot do a spot assessment now. The school, yes, it is. The school can do a, the school can go to, the school district has a solicitor that can go to the tax office and claim that there's a property that isn't, is either missing or is in a reverse appeal. They can do a reverse appeal. That is another issue. I mean, I had put up on our website all the appeals processes and what the results were on our website, so people can see, because that was a valid complaint as well. And no one in your districts are going to these appeals hearings to fight for you. No one. So if your taxes have come down in your, in your area, what our tax assessor's office is telling me is that the solicitor in every school district is not even attending the appeals hearings.
And municipalities.
And municipalities, to fight for your properties to be taxed in a fair way. So that might be another area that you can go and talk to your municipalities and ask them why it is that they aren't fighting for you, the taxpayer, so that this reassessment doesn't become inequitable, and that things do remain fair. That's, that's something that I wasn't aware of before I got involved in all this myself either. And we've had the Scranton Times at the appeals hearings as well, so thank you for attending and seeing the process. You know, they are open to the public for anyone that wants to see them, and they are on our website, so that you can see just who is going in to get their taxes appealed to a lower amount, and what the result of that appeal hearing was. It's on our website. Yes, Mike? Yeah, come on up.
Mike Hatton Zarrow from Childs. Commissioner, fellow citizens, if you could indulge me for a few minutes, I'd like to make some comments. Some of this stuff might be redundant to what the Commissioner, Mr. Durkin, and Attorney Sarah were talking about. I wrote down some comments that I wanted to make. First off, what is a reassessment and what's the repercussions of it? The supposed purpose of a reassessment is to bring the assessed value properties up to the current market value. The way this is accomplished is to raise the assessed values of properties and lower the millage rate. Again, an example, if your property's assessed at $20,000 and your millage rate is 50 mils, you would be paying $1,000 in taxes. If they raised the assessment up to 40,000, cut the millage in half to 25, you'd still be paying $1,000 in taxes. The sole reason for this reassessment, so that everybody knows, is for fiscally irresponsible municipalities and school districts and landlocked municipalities to get around the legislatively imposed tax caps. That's the sole reason for this. And the people that want it are the people from these areas, the city of Scranton, Scranton School District, Dunmore School District, Borough of German, just to give examples. All right, the reassessment may sound fair on the surface, but if you look at it, a reassessment cannot raise any property tax, additional property tax revenue, but as I asked before, it must be within 10%, right, of the current property taxes collected. Now, I don't know personally of any government undertaking that did not take more money out of your pockets, and this provision alone could result in a 10% across-the-board tax increase in the county. Secondly, the law says you cannot raise taxes within the first year of a reassessment. After that year is up, I guarantee you that all these fiscally irresponsible municipalities and school districts will raise their taxes, because they're no longer up against the legislatively imposed tax caps. Third, a reassessment will cost the county about $13 million, is what we're talking about. The county doesn't have the money, as they said before. They would certainly have to raise taxes to pay for this. This would mean an eight-mil tax increase, I believe one mil's about $1.6 million. This would be an eight-mil tax increase, or to put it in percentage terms, about a 14% tax increase. So just to do this reassessment, between the 10% kicker, one way or another, and the 14% tax increase to pay for it, you are looking at a 24% property tax increase just to initiate and do this reassessment. All right? Now, who would be reassessed? Or better yet, who would not be reassessed? First off, a reassessment would not affect nonprofits, because by federal law, they're tax exempt, so if anybody's telling you that, it's wrong. Secondly, it would probably not affect anybody who built a new home in the last 10 or 15 years, since they already have a higher assessed value than all their homes. The people that will be assessed at a much higher value are the ones, as they said before, that have probably owned their homes over a long time period, probably have already paid more in taxes than they paid for their properties, and they'll see a higher reassessment simply because they took care of their properties and improved on them. The last group that will be affected by a reassessment, as you said before, are the farmers in our communities and longtime local business owners. The newer businesses that come into the county, especially the larger businesses, they all have tax abatements. That's the reason they get them into county, okay? The solutions to this, all right? And Lorene started to talk about this. I've asked many of the local politicians, why instead of a reassessment, do they not go through the state legislature and either do a carve-out for the county, or a carve-out for the entire state, and start assessing on the sales price of properties? I've not received really any answers on this, except from the Commissioner that's here. This is currently done in the state of California, it's been adjudicated all through the court system, and upheld as constitutional. Again, I've yet to get a coherent answer from any of our local politicians, especially the ones that are in favor of this. This, to me, is the only fair way to assess properties, without hurting decades-long homeowners, farmers, and businesses. It should not only be done in the county, it should be done statewide. Our tax system, as Commissioner Cummings says, is so antiquated, it's not even funny. By doing this, you would gradually raise the assessed values up to the current market rates without incurring the cost of a reassessment. The other solution that's been talked about is the House Bill and Senate Bill 76, which I'm not going to get into here, you know, that's a debate for another forum. One of the reasons that you, you got to remember about that House Bill and Senate Bill 76, all the monies would be going into Harrisburg. And I just don't trust Harrisburg to redistribute this money out to the rural school districts. I believe most of this money would probably go to Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, Allen County.
Yeah, Mike.
That's my thing about it. Property taxes in itself are inherently unfair, and any, any solution should begin with this reality. There was 1,900 properties on the last county tax sale. Would a reassessment reduce the amount of property showing up on tax sale? I doubt it. People and businesses leave high-tax areas and with fiscally irresponsible governments and relocate to low-tax areas with fiscally responsible governments and business-friendly governments. I mean, the city of Scranton, people are fleeing it solely because of the higher taxes. Also, as Mr. Scaville brought up before, a reassessment will burden the tax, will burden our court system, also incurring more costs to the county. The only ones that would benefit from this, as Mr. Sarah said, are attorneys. The only ones that would benefit from this, as Mr. Sarah said, are attorneys. I will also add that I think it's very rich to hear the Pennsylvania Economy League support a reassessment. After all, this organization has failed every city it has tried to help. Look at the city of Scranton, they've been in distressed status for twenty-five years. P E L's answer to these financially irresponsible municipalities is always to raise taxes. The woman that was on the reassessment video, Joan Price, she's for reassessment because she has a vested interest in it, because that's what her firm does, is reassessments. And finally, would a reassessment promote economic activity, okay? At the September sixth, twenty seventeen county meeting, Bob Durkin, who's the head of Scranton Chamber of Commerce, and Andy Scrip, who's the Vice President for the Scranton Lacawanna Investable Industrial Development Authority, both said that tax abatements are the way to promote economic development. Any new businesses that would come into the county would surely receive these tax abatements. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mike. We do have one correction.
If I may, Michael.
Yes.
The, early in, in your speech there, you mentioned about the cost of the reassessment being about thirteen. It would be amortized, we would borrow and amortize it, so it would not create an eight mil tax increase. It would be amortized, as I said before, the cost of the reassessment itself, and again, the thirteen million includes potentially software, hiring people.
Right.
Who do some work, which would not be included in the ten-year amortization. Only the specific cost to pay a company to reassess the value of the county's properties would be included in the ten-year amortization. I don't know what that number would be, but the balance of it would be likely amortized over twenty-five or thirty years, so it would not create an eight mil tax increase, that's all I would say.
Well, you know, again, you're, you're taking, you know, thirteen million dollars and amortizing out over twenty-five or thirty years. I'm just saying that if you wanted to pay for the cost of this, you would have to raise taxes, eight mils, just to pay for the cost of this.
But the fact is, we would not do that. I mean, and.
Well, I don't, again, Tom, I, yes, I understand you wouldn't, you wouldn't do that.
Right.
Probably wouldn't do that, but you never know.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
You know, there is a way to pay all these foreclosures for senior citizens, and that's a reverse mortgage, and drag out all your equity. If I was that man up there, that's what I'd do.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I greatly appreciate it. I hope I helped. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.